I call this meeting to order, the mayor and board of commissioners for February the 11th, 2020. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Here.
Commissioner Pierce.
Here.
Commissioner Mourning.
Thank you.
Will you rise with me for the plate of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town God. I ask that you watch over our citizens and our elected bodies. I ask that you watch over our police department, Lord, and our fire and EMS, as well as our troops serving here and overseas. Lord, please be with us as we're here tonight and we leave this evening. Jesus' name, amen. All right. First on the agenda is two business meeting items. Town administrator, do you have those?
One of the things I was going to ask.
Public presentation.
If Commissioner Mourning has a public presentation.
Okay.
Do you want to go with that then?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Jacob Benningfield, who is going to present on his boardwalk that was recently built down at Veterans Park.
Dr. Tenon's on.
Steve, I think it's already on.
Okay.
Just give that to you a second to warm up. She doesn't handle power properly as well.
Ready? Floor's yours.
Awesome. My name is Jacob Benningfield. I'm a future Eagle Scout for Troop 92, Cora, Maryland. I did a, my Eagle Scout project was for Veterans Park. I did a boardwalk over a discharge of water that flooded when it rained over time. So, that led over to the basketball court and led through the path through the woods. You can see here the size of the ramp, the bridge. It was originally supposed to be 24 feet long and about eight-foot ramps on each side. One was five-foot because of the, the rule.
ADA requirements.
Yeah, sorry. And the other one was eight-foot, so it was a pretty long boardwalk. Day one, we dug footers and filled them with concrete, so we were able to dig them down to as deep as we could. We tried to get them at least like 36 inches, I'm pretty sure, and we got down to as low as the water, as low as we could dig. We hit water at some, one point, so we couldn't dig much more. So, we started filling it up with concrete and then we were able to finish them and that was the base of the bridge. Day two, we framed and boarded the main deck, so that was the actual part, not counting the ramps or the rails. And we got all that done and it was a really good day and perfect. Day three, we framed both ramps and we were able to board one of the ramps and get the rail beam set up, ready for the rail caps, but we were not able to apply the rail caps yet. But we started doing the second ramp of deck boards and then we ran out of deck boards, so we had to wait till another day to finish that. And then day four was the last day. We were able to finish the deck boards on the second ramp, put rail caps on, and we laid stone on each side. That way, it was, you could walk over and if another stone project had come along, we were able to, I was able to start off. And that was my Eagle Scout project. All done. It was amazing. A lot of people came out. I was really glad to be able to do it with here. Wouldn't have been able to do it without Dave Warnock, so I thank you.
I've been down there. I checked it out. It's definitely going to be something that is used regularly because people that go and play at that basketball court for sure end up with muddy shoes.
I already drove across it.
So, it's, it was definitely something that needed to be done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrator, do you have the business meeting items for this evening?
Give me one second to load everything here. All right. The next item on your agenda is you need to ratify essentially three annexation agreements. And there's a lot of detail related to these annexation agreements, so if you bear with me for a second, I want to, I want to try to simplify it so we don't have to go over every detail for all three because they're similar in many ways. So, you have before you three annexation agreements involving two private property owners out on Telegraph Road heading out of town, one of them being the Meadows Farm and the other one being the Albeck Farm. And what I want to show you, so, you know, a picture paints a thousand words. Basically, what we're doing is in our efforts to assist in the resolution of the contamination of water out at southern states, we need to run water and sewer lines out to that location. And for those that are not familiar, Southern States is located basically at the corner of Wilson Road and Telegraph Road, right across the street from Ramsey Ford. And this originates from, off the top of my head, I think it might have been around 2003 or 2004, there was a breach of nitrate from the Southern States property there that had a storage tank that, and I'm going to say this allegedly because it's all in court and nothing's been determined yet, and everything that's been done is to, to try to solve the issue, but allegedly, once the tank started leaking, it contaminated the wells of up to 14 properties along Wilson Road. And even though I'm saying allegedly, there was testing that was done that showed very high levels of nitrate levels in the wells of the 14 homes. Since that time, of the 14 homes, I believe roughly seven or eight of them have been purchased by Southern States themselves as part of a lawsuit brought by the homeowners against Southern States. And I'm going to say roughly around maybe 2009, 2010, I don't have it in front of me, that EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Maryland Department of the Environment, put Southern States in what is called a consent decree, which is basically a court order to resolve the issue of the contaminated water. So, we have been in and out of discussions with Southern States for many years because there were really one of two solutions that could be done out there. One was to drill a community well and potentially try to take everybody off their individual wells and get them onto a community well, but that could be very expensive and it would require ongoing maintenance and oversight of where you essentially have, let's say, 14 property owners trying to, you know, organize how that oversight on that water plant is going to be. So, if you're familiar with the homeowners association, homeowners associations are official organizations that are created. Every homeowner pays into it and they take care of the grass and the development, take care of the stormwater ponds. And when you have larger numbers of people in a homeowners association, it's much easier to generate the revenue needed to financially be responsible for whatever that homeowners association has to take care of. When you're in a smaller community such as this, in which the cost for maintaining the water plants in terms of testing and licensed people can be very high, it was determined that the, the best alternative would be to get water from the town of Rising Sun. And for the residents here, we all know the history of the town of Rising Sun in the fact that nobody on this board, none of the employees here, were around when everything really started going south for the town of Rising Sun in relation to its wastewater treatment plant and water capacity. So, what I'm basically saying is along with the residents, we are all charged with solving the town's water and sewer issues. And so, part of the solutions over the years have been to spend a lot of money on a wastewater treatment plant and to spend a lot of money on a resolution of the water issue. And as we've said many times, the town could have spent about $8.5 million to solve the water issue, but for another, basically $2 million, we could basically double the capacity of our water capability coming in, which would mean, what that meant is from a business standpoint, if the town would have paid the $8.5 million for just the amount of water that was needed, then the residents would be looking at the rates the way they are now and the potential increases in the future with really no hope of ever being able to buy that down because we would be limited on water capacity. So, by investing another $2 million over a 40-year loan, we were able to double the capacity with the mindset of there's going to be economic development in the county area. We see it just about every single day in the newspaper, the county talking about economic development, economic opportunities. We've read in the paper and I've seen the Facebook posts constantly about all the investments that the county is making at Calvert Regional Park. We've seen the advertisements of 8,000 lacrosse players and field hockey players coming to the Calvert Regional Park. Hotels be ready, restaurants be ready. That's the way the advertisements have been. We've read in the paper and seen online, the county rightfully celebrating the economic opportunities that are going to come from Fair Hill International and being recognized as a four-star equestrian event in which there are, I believe, only about four or five in the entire world. And when these events take place over a three-day period, they are projecting upwards of 350,000 people coming to the Fair Hill International, which means hotel rooms, restaurants, you know, just a million different things. And the county talks about $30 million of economic opportunity for the Cecil County area, but we all know that if we ride out in that direction, there are no hotels. There's a, you can count restaurants on one hand if that, meaning that once the equestrian event got approved and we see all the renovations that are being done out there in Calvert Regional Park, the county is investing $3, $4 million at every budget cycle to put more turf fields in there, more accommodations. Once those things really get a foothold, there's going to be a need for restaurants and hotels and all this ancillary support stuff that is coming. So, the town of Rising Sun has taken the position that we can't control what's going to happen out there, but we know it is going to happen. And this elected body and some other past members have worked very hard over the last couple of years to make sure that if that economic opportunity is going to come, that the town of Rising Sun be a player at the table. And what I always sort of joke is imagine when you're at Christmas time and the adults sit at the table and the kids sit at the kids' table. Well, over the years, the town of Rising Sun has, quite frankly, always had to sit at the kid table because we didn't have any economic opportunity or resources to provide for it. So, now we are able, we just wanted to be a player at the table, that if the county is going to push all this economic development out there, that the taxpayers of Rising Sun be able to be a part of that as opposed to the for-profit private company of Artesian Water in which Cecil County has sold all the water rights to Artesian. So, any economic opportunity that happens out there, if the town of Rising Sun is not in a position to be a player at the table, then the for-profit entity gets to build all those water lines, sell all that water. What I'm saying to you is everybody else gets the real estate tax, the water revenue, the sewer revenue, and the town of Rising Sun doesn't get any of that. And when you think about what's happening on the 40 corridor with all the warehouses that are being built, if you look at a map, there are communities that get out to 40, Northeast, Elton, Charlestown, Perryville, they get out in that area. So, they get the breadcrumbs of any economic development that the county does, they get it because they have the water and sewer, they have the land out there. So, when that development starts to happen and Amazon adds $2, $3 million of assessed value to the real estate tax base, guess what? That gets divvied among all those other government entities. We're sitting up here in the northern portion of Cecil County and the way it's been playing out is that the county will invest your money as a taxpayer, let's not forget, you're a taxpayer in Cecil County also, they will invest your taxpaying money for that economic development out there, but you're still going to be saddled with the cost of infrastructure on something that you did not cause. It was changes in environmental regulations that made our water and sewer out of date. And so, it's very important that people recognize that what we've been trying to do is to get a return on the investment of our taxpayers. And so, one of the first steps in that tonight is to be in a position to provide the water and sewer to the Southern States properties. Let me lay out right now, under that diagram, Southern States is paying for the water line. The taxpayers of Rising Sun are not paying for that water line out there. Southern States is paying for it. But it does give us an opportunity to be out into the Calvert area so that if a hotel gets built or a restaurant gets built or businesses get built, they can get that water. And again, this is so important to, for me to say, not to get the water from the town of Rising Sun, but to get the water from the taxpayers of the town of Rising Sun. And that's what I think needs to be driven home. This is not about the concrete building of the town of Rising Sun. This is about the taxpayers of Rising Sun being able to get the benefit of what's going on. So, as part of doing that, we need to get water and sewer lines out to the Southern States properties. Now, the reason for the sewer line is real simple. We are located in what is regulated by the Sesquahanna River Basin Commission. And anybody who's been to these meetings over the year, and Augie, I've always heard you say it, the bowl of water. And the bowl of waters represent aquifers. And we've always been limited on the amount of water that we can take out of a bowl because everybody else had all the straws in the bowl. Well, the Sesquahanna River Basin Commission creates another situation in that if you take water out of that bowl and take it to another bowl, they charge you additional money on top of your water rate for the town of Rising Sun. So, by getting sewer out to those locations, that water doesn't go in the other bowl. It's perceived to have been brought back to the town of Rising Sun. So, are we, are we giving a benefit to those residents out there? Yes, we are, but we're also expanding our footprint in water and sewer to be able to take advantage of Ramsey Ford, anything they want to do. And it, it's all out there in the public because we talked about it in our master sewer and water plans. We were contacted by several entities out there that want water and sewer. Calvert Manor Nursing Home, Cecil County Schools have talked about wanting to get water and sewer out to Calvert Elementary School. There is a need for the water and sewer. That goes back to what I said, we want to be a player at the table. We don't want just for-profit entities being the only one who can provide that service. We want our taxpayers to be able to do it. So, part of that exercise is to get the water and sewer out to Southern States. So, what the elected body has before them tonight is annexation agreements. Now, these annexation agreements are coming as a result of what are 30-foot-wide easements going across properties that we need. In other words, we could run the water and sewer line in the state highway of Telegraph Road, but it would cost the taxpayers a lot more money to be opening up that roadbed and doing all that restoration. So, by getting the easements on some of these private properties, we save a significant amount of money about not having to be in state highway. So, the, we have secured 30-foot-wide easements, which I'm going to show you here. The property on the left-hand side that I am highlighting is what is called the Knutson property. And where we're basically at is over here on the left-hand side is Pierce Road. And right across the street from Pierce Road is the Brian's Grace Development. So, when you go down Telegraph Road and make a right on Pierce Road, Brian's Grace is on the right-hand side. That big farm that you see on the left-hand side is Knutson's. That is the last property in the town of Rising Sun. In order to annex anything into town, the new land has to be contiguous. So, the lands of Robert Knutson here are in the town of Rising Sun. So, these hashed marked areas are the 30-foot easements that we are securing from the Meadows Farm to be able to get about 2,800 feet out to the edge of his property, which then connects to Albeck Farms' property. And so, that diagram is a little bit more interesting because I've got to show you two different maps for Albeck Farms here. Albeck Farms is basically made up of two separate parcels. There's this parcel here and this parcel here, the second one. This is parcel 473. The bigger one is 15, parcel 15. What's important to note and the reason why there's multiple agreements with Albeck compared to Meadows is because parcel 15 actually wraps all the way around parcel 473 and comes out the other side. And so, in order to describe the easements, we have to show two easements on parcel 15 and then one easement on parcel 473. So, what you're voting on is one annexation agreement for Meadows and two annexation agreements for Albeck Farms. Now, what's important to note, and I'm going to segue into something that I've really been talking about lately that's really important for people to think about, is that you have upcoming elections that involve county, key county positions here. And this is not a statement about who you should be voting for, it's a statement about making sure that when people come to talk to you about why you should get their vote, remember that you're a, you are a resident of the town of Rising Sun and you should be saying, okay, I get what you're doing for the county. Because it's important for those county people to talk about what they're doing for the county because they're county representatives. But sometimes it's forgotten that the town of Port Deposit, the town of Rising Sun, the town of Elton, the town of Northeast, the town of Charlestown, Chesapeake City, Cecilton, they are also in the county, but they are unique to themselves and they all have individual needs that help them go. And so, as town of Rising Sun residents, we need to make sure that the county people are paying attention to our needs also and putting us in a position where we as, as the resident, you as a resident can be successful also. And so, these, what we have been battling is a lot of misconception about what is actually happening out there. And that's why, that's why I went into the segue about upcoming county elections because we are only, the property owners are only annexing the 30-foot easements into the town. They are not annexing their entire farms. They are not developing their entire farms. They are not being made to connect to the water and sewer. We are not taking their properties under eminent domain, as rumors are out there. We are not telling them they cannot farm. We're doing nothing but getting a 30-foot-wide easement that we're annexing into town so that we can have a clear path to run water and sewer out to those locations. So, that's what these annexation agreements are about. These are not two farmers who came to the town of Rising Sun that said, I want to annex into your town because I want to change the whole landscape of that area. I want to build houses all over the place. That's not the case. Neither one of these property owners is looking to develop. They just recognize and support the idea of the town of Rising Sun being able to get water out to this health and safety issue. And quite frankly, they're in favor of assisting us in being able to do that. That is not to be construed what they want to develop their land because that's not the case. And so, I'm saying all this because of all the misinformation that's going on out there and it has been a battle. So, the annexation agreements are talking about the 30-foot-wide easements that are going to be going out to those two locations. So, as I said, you have three annexation agreements that you have to vote upon. The first one is Richard C. Meadows and Brenda J. Meadows are the owners of three properties out on Telegraph Road. One is 524 Telegraph Road, one is 567 Telegraph Road, and one is 685 Telegraph Road. The configuration of these easements and the, and the agreements affect those three properties, so we need to list those property legal particulars in order to describe where the actual easements are located. So, they, Meadows is the owner of these three properties. And they, basically, the language goes on to say that they are consenting to annex these areas of ground into the town of Rising Sun. And to give you an idea of that, we're talking about, in some cases, areas that are less than 20 square feet are being annexed into the town of Rising Sun. Others, the long easement is about 1.01 acres. So, again, the language is very clear that we're only annexing those areas that contain the easements. Some other important things that come out of this is that for the elected body, there is nothing in these agreements that require the property owner to annex into the town in its entirety. So, just because they annex the easement in doesn't mean they're required to annex the rest of their property. If they want to do it in the future, then we go through the process at that point in time. The other thing in here is if you go to page five of both documents, you're going to see where it says public sewer and public water. And the last sentence in each of those is nothing in this annexation agreement shall suggest that the property owner is obligated to connect to said public sewer and then also to said public water. Because we've had these property owners being approached by different people saying they're going to take advantage of you in this agreement. And we've, we've done our due diligence to put our, our true intentions forward to write these agreements, so there's no wiggle room here. So, any, any rumors that continue to go around that people have to annex or connect to the sewer and water is just not true. Because they are only annexing the easement areas in, they're not getting any town services from us, so they are not paying any town tax for the 20 square feet, so forth and so on because they're not getting any service from us. All they're doing is giving us an easement, annexing it into town so we can run our water and sewer services in there. That basically is, everything else is the boilerplate language that you have to have in these annexation agreements. So, it would require three separate motions for the three separate annexation agreements here. And I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Do you want us to start just in, into the motions or?
Whatever you want.
Do I make a motion?
Parcels. Is it by parcels?
By, yeah, by the, you would do the Meadows agreement first.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the Meadows easement area annexation agreement?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero, pass. Can I get a motion to approve the Albeck Farms easement area annexation agreement for parcel 15?
I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. Can I get a motion to approve Albeck Farms easement area annexation agreement for parcel 473?
I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes four to zero.
All right. So, mayor, at this point, I want to, I want to outline what happens next. Under the state law, the state law does not talk about annexation agreements, but it's becoming very common for communities to enter into an agreement with the property owners and with the property owners before you get through the whole legal process. Because quite frankly, there's a lot of energy that's generated this point forward and nobody wants to waste anybody's time in the process. So, even though these annexation agreements were adopted tonight, all they are is an agreement to proceed forward with the legislative process of annexing. They are not annexed into the town simply because these agreements were ratified. What has to happen next is an annexation petition has to be generated and a plan. And the plan basically is the map that I showed you, but we have to change it a little bit in terms of showing what the new zoning is going to be in the annexed areas. And as you can imagine, the zoning's not going to change. It's still going to be used as farmland. It's zoned, and they are in the county right now. It would be brought into our community in a very similar zoning so that it could go through the process. So, once the annexation plat is generated, then an annexation resolution will be presented to the board. The board will read the annexation resolution into the minutes. And then, it has to sit for 45 days. And in the 45-day period, the whole annexation concept goes to the Department of Planning, Queering House, and then they have all the various state agencies be able to weigh in on what their feelings are about the annexation. In addition, a separate copy of that goes to the county and the county gets to look at the plan and decide whether or not they're going to oppose it or to allow it to go through. Once the 45 days goes by, whether we get a response or not from those other agencies, the elected body can move forward with a public hearing and a formal consideration of the annexation resolution. Prior to having the public hearing, we would advertise in the paper that the town is considering the resolution to annex into, to annex these easements. Again, it's important, it's not properties, it's easements. To annex these easements into town, if we get any comments, which I'm 99% sure we're going to, those comments would be read into the minutes also. So, that's the process. Nothing, nothing happens hypothetically. There's no formal decision made until at least, you know, another 45 days from the time the resolution is introduced. Not now. We're still working on the resolution. So, again, just to be clear, these properties are not annexed in. As of today, they've just agreed to go through the process of annexation.
Thank you, Town Administrator. And I know the board would speak to this. We thank you for all your hard work on this. It's something that we've been aware of and you've been working very diligently to try to get finished. So, thank you. Citizens input. Would anyone like to speak this evening? All right. Chief?
I do not have a report today, sir.
All right. Town Administrator?
The only two things that I wanted to bring up, and I'll start with bad news. Maybe the residents have gotten it already. But we got a notice from Armstrong. They always send us a notice first that they're going to be raising the rates of the internet. The internet rates are going to be going up. Zoom, which I assume is just basic, the basic package is going from $62.95 to $68.95, and then everything else is going also. The phone is not going up. There's no change in the cost for phone. And they're saying, and I'm sure every resident's going to get this, but they notify us for the purpose of letting our constituents know that the reason for the increase is the, they're stating that the cost to buy the program, in other words, I'm sure they pay something to HBO, to carry HBO, whatever, the cost that those agencies are passing along to them, according to Zoom, is actually outpacing inflation. So, these rates are not like, as a result of inflation. It's a result of all those programming that they have to buy that we watch. That cost is going up, so they're passing that cost along to their subscribers. So, you should be getting that notification in the mail if you haven't gotten it already. The two things, the good things I wanted to talk about at the last meeting, I talked about APG, FCU. We did the final inspection for that. I don't know if they did their soft opening or not. I don't know.
Monday at 9:00.
Okay. So, the grand opening is going to be at the end of February?
March 11.
Huh?
March 11.
Oh, they moved it?
I had the press release from Brian Wilcox yesterday.
Okay. So, they moved it to March 11. So, it's a very beautiful facility in there. They did a nice job with the tenant fit out. We're also getting a permit application for another house to be built in town. So, again, remember what I said, and I know I can beat a dead horse. I know that. But I do it for a reason because I want people to understand what it is the end goal is. When I talk about making the investment in the water and sewer, the car wash, APG, Bog Turtle, the coffee shop, the two or three houses that are being built, that's the end result of those investments. And they're going to continue as we go forward. That's the reason why all this stuff was put into motion over the last couple of years. And that benefits everybody. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. My mayor's report is pretty brief this evening. I did want to send a huge thank you to all of those people that attended the grand opening of Bog Turtle Brewery, especially our friends at the state government, including Comptroller Peter Francho, State Secretary Ben Grumbles of MDE, and Planning Secretary Robert McCord. A huge thank you to Chris, John, and Steve, the owners of Bog Turtle. It's a beautiful restaurant brewery inside. And we wish them many, many years of success here in the town of Rising Sun. But it was just a wonderful evening and celebration there. I also attended the mayor's conference in Annapolis this past week. We received legislative briefings from the, both the House and the Senate leadership, including House Speaker Adrian Jones and Bill Ferguson, who is the Senate president there, talking about the different legislative agendas that are going on in Annapolis right now. We also, myself and my fiancee, spent the evening with Governor Hogan at the governor's mansion. It was a wonderful evening where other Maryland mayors spent time with the governor and lieutenant governor. I spent most of my evening talking about the great things going on in our community, inviting the governor and lieutenant governor to come back up. As you know, this past year, the lieutenant governor did visit us and then in the prior year, the governor visited us. So, I am anticipating them both coming up and seeing us sometime this summer. That is the end of the mayor's report. Commissioner Oth and Reith?
I just want to add a little something to what Calvin had said about this annexation agreement. This is actually a culmination of years of work with, going back and forth with southern states. This was up to them. They needed a solution to their water pollution problem out there. We made many trips to Baltimore. We've sent a representative down to Richmond to meet with southern states. They've come back up here. This has been going back and forth for quite some time. And we turned out to be their solution that they were willing to pay for to supply clean water to the residents out on Wilson Road. I think a big question a lot of people are going to have as residents is, how's this going to affect my water bill? And Calvin, when I'm done, I think if you want to speak to that a little more, that would be good because I bet that is a big question on everybody's mind.
Right.
How, because southern states did pay for this. So, thanks to our town attorney Jay Gallow for many, many trips. Thank you to Albeck Farms and the Meadows. Calvin spent a lot of time with them, going over everything in detail, allowing them to take it to their attorneys and make sure that they were comfortable with this, that they were protected, that we were being honest and upfront with them. So, this is not something that just happened recently. This has been a long time coming, a lot of hours, a lot of travel time, through a couple of commissioners working on behalf of this. And I'm proud to have been part of the final agreement to be read out tonight. And this is another big win for the town of Rising Sun. So, just thanks to everybody involved in this and for making this happen. And as Travis said, you know, we've had, we're on the map with Annapolis. To have had the governor, lieutenant governor, the comptroller, and other secretaries come to our town and not just come through, take a picture, and leave. They came through, they all, you can see the pictures, had a beer next door and sat down, had some food, and learned about what's going on. And all of us going to Annapolis, especially Travis going down and staying in front of them, they know us by name and they know what's going on in Rising Sun, little old Rising Sun up here. So, big things are happening. So, just a big thank you to everybody who worked together, especially to, you know, Albeck and Meadows Farms and Calvin, all the work you put into it. This is a great thing for the town of Rising Sun. That's all I have tonight.
Mayor, if I would, I would like to answer the question you had about the water, how it affects. If you go back when the town originally passed its rate structure increase, it was, we could not gamble on projecting all kinds of development in the community at that time because we didn't know. And it was very tempting to say, "Well, let's do a rate increase based upon, we're going to have 100 homes, or 1,000 homes, or 1,000 businesses come in." The elected body at that time did not create the rate structure that way. They took the worst-case scenario that our residents would be stuck paying this bill and for whatever reason, no matter how much effort we made, we couldn't get any new investments into the town. And so, the rate structure that we are operating under is based upon nothing, really, no new development coming as a result of these investments. And part of the reason why this elected body has delayed ratcheting up the rate increases over the years is because we've seen ourselves realistically getting closer to starting to see the benefit of these investments so that people could start tying into the system. Meaning, every new house it connects is another user on the system. Every development, every business, its impact fees, that all gets more people paying into the system. And we've always said our goal is to, at the very least, flatline the rate increases, if not, start to bring them back down. So, that's the benefit of what we're doing. And literally, it's like, we didn't, it's not like we expected 100 homes and we got to pick away 100 homes before we start to see the benefit. We projected no new connections. So, what do you call it? Icing on the cake? This is like icing on the cake, every connection that comes in here. The last thing that, and I think it's important about the water rates, it came to my attention recently that there was a perception out there that the town of Rising Sun not only rounds up its water and sewer rates. And let me back up and say, normally, whenever you're dealing with numbers, if something comes out to 32.5, you make a decision as a policy to either round it up to 33 or round it down to 32. In other words, you can't charge somebody 32.5 cents. So, that's normal to round up and down. It's important to note that not only does the town of Rising Sun automatically round all of its numbers down. If it's 32.9, we round it down. If it's 32.1, we round it down. It was out on social media that not only were we rounding it up, we were taking bills that were hypothetically $32.40 and adding another 60 cents to the bill and rounding it all the way up to 33. That is just unequivocally not a correct statement. We round it down. Our system is designed to round down. So, I wanted to clear the air on that. So, that concludes my report.
Commissioner Braun?
I have no report.
Commissioner Pearson?
Okay, I have two things. First of all, Calvin, when we started this thing back in 2010, when southern states first came to us, we weren't sure how we were going to ever accomplish this. And thank you for the hard work you put into it over the last decade. I know at times I have been a royal, forcing it, but I knew from those meetings back then what your goal was and to keep focused on that goal. I can assure you that the rates that we established back then, we didn't just randomly pick out of the air. We actually had consulting firms who do this as their profession to advise us, "This is how you will pay the money back." They helped us establish the rates. And as you said, anything from there on is icing on the cake.
Right.
Because those rates have the potential to go down at some point as more users join the system. And again, thanks.
Thank you.
The second thing is, again, on social media, something popped up over the weekend about the state of Maryland doing a survey on the mushroom farm that they do a quarterly scanning of their composting. Now, we have, we will be putting up, Calvin has, where you can write or contact this, Mr. Cobolence, to tell him, to give him your viewpoint. I believe that they have not come out at the right times because anybody that lives, and I will say this, to the north side of the composting plant has a different odor than the south side. Unfortunately, last night, someone went to Bog Turtle and the first comments they made in reviewing Bog Turtle was the awful smell that was in town. And yet, it was real bad last night. Unfortunately, their inspector wasn't here, but hopefully...
I should buy him a beer.
Hopefully, this will get more attention if more people can please, please contact these people and say, "Yeah, it is a bigger problem than you're making it out to be." They will tell you that they have been to the elementary school and only smelled manure. I can tell you this, my son lives at Barnes Corner and Hopewell, and we can sit out there on a hot summer's night and not have any odor. You come back home to Summer Hill and it's like you just marched right into it, an area of two and a half miles. That's all I have tonight, sir.
Mr. Wornick?
Couple things. One, I'd like to thank Eagle Scout candidate Jacob Benningfield for his hard work on the boardwalk. I'm completely changing topics, I feel like.
And sitting during this entire meeting?
So, I, but I, you know, I did not have as much opportunity to help out with this project as I have with past projects. And, you know, I apologize I wasn't there as much, but you clearly had, you were in capable hands. It's, you know, one of the things that we often talk about is that with Eagle Scout projects, we appreciate the work that Eagle Scout does, but the behind-the-scenes, what we don't see is the families and the members of the community that, you know, the other scouts that help out with those projects. I can tell you that Jacob's father was an instrumental part of the construction. He, I mean, it's, he came down, first of all, I think he owns a construction company, so. And what's the name of that company?
DDR Construction.
DDR Construction, so a little plug for them. But, you know, they did great work on, you know, he did great work on taking a bunch of teenage kids and getting them to build a boardwalk that is quite sturdy. You know, I know that, you know, your mom's been instrumental in running you back and forth to the park for meetings and things like that. There's a, you know, a number of scouts that have helped out that were pretty consistently there every weekend or every day that you guys had projects. And, you know, then there's just a number of people that go into these projects and it's really a...
It's a family affair.
Yeah, they're quite a large effort. And there's, it's not just about building the bridge. There's actually a lot that goes into prep work, raising funds. You know, we make them go through the permit process, not actually pay for the permits, but more about learning about the paperwork and stuff. So, he had to go through our painful, I mean, our very efficient, easy permit process with the town administrator and submit a permit. And I assume that permit was acceptably filled out or the town administrator would probably kicked it back and, you know, we'd be down there. back, and, you know, we'd be down there condemning the boardwalk, and, no, I'm kidding.
What Commissioner Warnock doesn't tell you is, he actually goes down and sees if these boardwalks are sturdy, and if they're not, he will take them down and rebuild them.
That's, I, I hate to admit, but.
It's great that the, this one actually was wonderful.
That wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, well, actually, it wasn't, yeah, we've, yeah, that's a long story, we'll just leave that for another day. But anyway, the, you know, it's, I really appreciate everything, you know, all the work you've put into it, and, and, you know, it's another great project for the town. Here soon, we're gonna be putting down, you know, the ground, unfortunately, ground didn't freeze really this year, so we're really struggling to get anything done in the parks going one year or two, 'cause it's, it's just been so wet, as you're painfully aware, the water table's barely a couple feet below the ground surface, so we're really struggling to get anything done down there, but we're hoping to still get standing down, and if we can get all that in place, then we'll have some really nice trails over there here The, so thank you again for all that. Another topic, I ran into an anonymous person, and she wanted us to know that the anonymous people that give a doggone are collecting food the next two Saturdays, on the fifteenth and twenty-second, at the, I'm gonna probably say this wrong, the Allred Community Center out in Conawingo, Rox, seventy-nine Rock Spring Road, from eight AM to one PM. People can also pay off school meal, I believe it's tabs, says tots, I think, my phone was hungry at the time. One-third goes to Rising Sun Middle, one-third to Perryville, and one-third to Northeast. And I think with that, that is my report.
Town Administrator.
Yes, a couple months ago, I started the concept of a day in history, and what I did is I started looking at the Midland Journal, which used to operate right here in Rising Sun, in the area where Butch Rubel's barbershop is at, and so this is February eleventh, nineteen twenty-seven, and this is some lamps, that, that was a special they were doing at Haynes and Kirk, which was a hardware store that was later replaced by Bud McFadden's Western Auto Hardware Store, so there's a long history of the vegan auto store here. Lamps were nine dollars, lanterns were seven fifty. The thing I liked out of this is, there's no chimney to wash, you can't spill fuel, and it makes its own gas from motor gasoline, so I'm curious what that exactly means there. Another service is NDRS Bank, our beloved bank that a couple years ago had to go out of business, but at that time, I believe it was the oldest bank in, in the state of Maryland. Their advertisement was serviced with a heart in it, all transactions here are marked by sincerity and by the earnest desire to serve you faithfully and well, the National Bank of Rising Sun. Another advertisement was Ashby's Cut Blade Candy, announcing Mary Winkin candies, seventy cents a pound, delicious, homemade, pure ingredients, recipes extravagantly rich, Mary Winkin is the finest candy that can be made, regardless of price, try a box today and see. The thing I love is, you make an appointment to go get your candy, it's agency by appointment, so that's pretty cool, that you gotta make an appointment to go see the candy maker. A newly opened restaurant, apparently there was McIntyre's Restaurant somewhere on Queen Street, had just newly opened in nineteen twenty-seven, and the advertising, fresh open oysters and clams, homemade soups, homemade pies, steaks chops, they were located in, on Queen Street. Whippet price reduced, everyone can now own a moderately priced car with four-wheel brakes. A whippet coach was six hundred and twenty-five dollars, the coupe was six twenty-five, a roadster was six ninety-five, and if you really wanted to spend some money, a six coach was seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, and if you had that kind of money back then, you could buy one of these, that's what a whippet was at that time. Some of the things that had happened in the community, we've always, at the last meeting, we were sort of commenting about how dangerous it was to work, and we all know, there was no OSHA, and people got hurt all the time, but here's a guy, while operating a steam shovel for the Anorundl Corporation on the Conawingo Project, Herbert Chandler of Darlington had one of his legs broken in four places by a large rock that rolled down its hillside. And I'm always amazed at the art, you know, what they decide to print in the newspapers, you often see stories of Sally came to visit Betty, and that's all it says, is Sally came to visit Betty, that was on the front page of the newspaper. Chase S. Pile Insurance operated in Rising Sun for many years, and they promote to practice fire prevention and eliminate the world's greatest agents, fires are now taking a toll of five hundred million dollars a year, it is your duty to help prevent fires, and that was Chase S. Pile Insurance operating in town. And here's a little bit, it's funny, but it's not funny, it's really startling, safer for Maryland babies, this is nineteen twenty-seven, last year was a favorable year for babies in Maryland, according to the records at the State Department of Health, with one hundred sixty-eight fewer deaths among children under the, under a year old than in nineteen twenty-five. The total number of baby deaths during the year was one thousand four hundred eighty-eight, the total in nineteen twenty-five was one thousand six hundred fifty-six. So if you've ever talked to your parents and grandparents, you really, this is, this is talking about what they used to tell you, how rough it was, that there was no guarantee that when you were born, you were gonna live.
I think the chiefness about that, right, Chief?
I was there. Not a play into adults.
Here's some of the things that you see in the newspaper back then, Willis L. Ellery of this town has purchased a lot on Pearl Street formerly owned by Nathan Volk, and will erect the residence thereon. The Rising Sun Women's Christian Temperates Union will hold a get-together victory banquet in the Emity Church on Thursday evening, February twenty-fourth, at seven thirty o'clock. A meeting of the Milk Producers Association was held in the public hall of Rising Sun on Wednesday morning of last week, the question of testing cows for tuberculosis was discussed.
That's frightening.
Do you realize how big Canning was in this town?
Yeah.
All right, upcoming meetings.
I, we're still gonna.
Oh, okay.
'Cause I have one in here for the chief, I, I pulled one out for the chief. The movies, we all saw the other day in the museum, that it was a pretty prolific movie theater here in the town of Rising Sun, I'd love to see better pictures of it. Were the movies of that day, Saturday, February twelfth, a special, Tom Mix and Tony and the Wonder Horse in the Canyon of Light, a thrilling western drama, an absorbing story of men who risk their lives when law and order fails to keep lawless elements within bounds. Path comedy, path news, admission, ten cents and thirty-five cents, sort of a testament of how economical it was at that time compared to today. Monday, February fourteenth, William Fox presents Going Crooked with Bessie Love. I love the titles of some of these things. Wednesday, February sixteen, Hoot Gibson in The Man in the Saddle, those were the movies that were playing back in the town of Rising Sun in nineteen twenty-seven. The Rising Sun, this is actually from February eleventh, nineteen thirty-eight, and I found this very interesting, this is Rising Sun High School, the journalism club, that was talking about the school starting a basketball program, and they say here in the second line, the second paragraph, Rising Sun is a progressive school, always ready to try anything that may benefit its pupils. Only four schools in the, in the county have equipment for basketball, and we are very proud that our school was one of the four. Rising Sun has entered into the new sport with enthusiasm, and has fine equipment, and wide awake teams, is the way they described it. They also go on to talk about, they haven't won a game, but when I checked the scores, they get blown out by like forty points. A little startup.
Well, they were enthusiastic, though.
And then the last item for the chief, chief, you'll like this one here, and this is, the title is Padlocking Old Cecil. The following is from the Oxford News, it shows that people are beginning to sit up and take notice of the war, Cecil County's new sheriff is waging against the renegade bootleggers who have been running wild with their illegal traffic. Sheriff Logan has declared war on the moon, in bold words, he has announced that the motto of his office here and after is to be, let no moonshine on Cecil's claims. Even the Eighth District, where there ain't no Ten Commandments, has been invaded, and its ancient privilege of doing as it done pleases has been abridged. Last week, entirely unannounced.
Didn't wanna bring that up yet.
Entirely unannounced, he visited the roadhouse of Miss Kate Hannah near Oakwood, and found there, according to a report, fifty-six gallons of liquor of various ages, but mostly infantile. He confiscated the liquor and placed Miss Hannah under arrest, she being held in five hundred dollars bail for court. Shortly afterwards, he picked up a full barrel of shine on the premises of Luke Goodyear near Elkton, the proprietor was also held in bail for court. If these be straws which show the way the wind blows, Sheriff Logan is going to make moonshining in his ballywix stale, flat, and unprofitable. Already the price is going up for fancy brands, with the promise that everything with a kick in it, except hay tanners and miles, will soon be out of the reach of the poor man's purse. So that was a day in history in nineteen twenty-seven, in town of Rising Sun.
Thank you, Town Administrator, for that enlightening piece of history. Upcoming meetings, town meeting is February twenty-fifth, that's our next one, we have a planning commission meeting Monday, March second, at six thirty PM, then the following town meetings in March are March tenth at seven PM and March twenty-fourth at seven PM. Town hall will be closed Presidents' Day, which is Monday, February seventeenth. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.